We'll call the meeting to order. I would like to recognize two special guests tonight, Dr. Dale Viles and Mr. Denson from Milton and Arlington. They're going to be evaluating our board tonight. We're glad to have them with us. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and form a moment's silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? A motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Firdal. Those in favor say aye. Motion passed. I want to remind everyone about a letter that you should have a copy in your folder from the Speaker of the House camera section commending Dr. Combs and the board on a job well done in keeping children in school during the pandemic. It's a personalized letter from the Speaker of the House congratulating Dr. Combs and the board on our work during the pandemic. It's been a hard struggle for everyone having it. We appreciate it all. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Next, Ms. Kathy Waterbury is here to talk about, speak about curriculum. Ms. Waterbury?
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight.
Would you state your name and everything, address, and why you're here for the board?
Okay, my name and address?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Kathy Waterbury and my address is 2613 Porterville Road in Otoka. And I'm here tonight representing the Tipton County Republican Party. And I want to share with you all how the Republican Party came to be involved with the school board and specifically looking at the curriculum and the things we've been communicating with Dr. Combs and you all about. So we have been approached, the party, the executive committee of the Republican Party, was approached by several teachers, teachers from every elementary school in the district except one with complaints about the curriculum, actually stating, you know, they were ready to walk out and they were just really unhappy with what they were asked to be, being asked to teach. The reason they came to us, and you might ask, why did they not come to the board, is because they were afraid of retaliation. So we assured the teachers that we would take up that, their calls and be sure that they were heard, their concerns were heard by the people in the county and by the membership of the Republican Party and Dr. Combs and the school board. So I appreciate you letting me be here tonight to talk about that. Specifically, the curriculum that they, some were concerned about, and we have since looked at and also have great concerns about, is the Amplify ELA fifth grade curriculum that was adopted in the spring of last year. After reviewing the books, it became quickly obvious that Amplify, the core knowledge foundations material, is teaching CRT, which is critical race theory. Amplify's core values are equity, diversion, and inclusion. That's stated from their website. I read an excerpt from the personal narratives book from the fifth grade curriculum at our last monthly Tipton County Republican Party meeting. We had over 70 people in attendance. And when I read the little excerpt from the story of Rosa Parks, they were shocked. Members were shocked. They spoke up. One came to us afterwards with tears in her eyes, a parent who did not know that this was being taught to their children because these are books that are not sent home with the children. So parents have no idea what their kids are studying. Our investigation and findings led us to the decision that we would like to review all curriculum being used in our county school system. We requested from Dr. Combs to review every textbook in grades kindergarten through 12th grade, and we've got an army of volunteers that are ready to help us review those books. We want to be sure that we have a clear understanding, that parents have a clear understanding of what their children are being taught and what's contained in our textbooks. The Tipton County Republican Party represents over 70% of the population in Tipton County based on our last voting records. And we take the responsibility of informing our membership and the public very seriously. And so that's why we're continuing with this effort. In closing, we believe that the position of an elected school board member is one of the most important positions in our county and really our state. School board members, elected school board members, are charged with overseeing the education of our children, the future of our county, the future of our state, and the future of our country. And the children of Tipton County deserve an education that aligns with the values of the majority of our citizens. The executive committee takes this seriously, as do your constituents. A wise woman said to me, and this is what lit the fire in me, to become involved with the school system once again, my children are grown now, but once again, a wise woman said to me, change the schools and you change the world. And I think we can all agree on one thing in this room that our world needs some changing.
Thank you, Ms. Waterbury.
Thank you for allowing me the time to express our concerns. We look forward to our continued cooperation with Dr. Combs as we dive deeper into this important endeavor. So we look forward to getting our hands on those books and putting that army of volunteers to work.
Thank you. I think Dr. Bird will address a few of your concerns during her presentation.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have an item that needs to be added to the consent agenda. It's for the school support organization, for Brighton, FFA Alumni Association, has all been signed off on already. Everybody's signed off on it and needs to be put into the consent agenda if there's no objection. Everybody has a copy of it. Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, then we have a motion to approve. I think that was a motion by Mr. Benson, seconded by Ms. McClarkin. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no motion passed. Dr. Bird, Director of Instruction, of course.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. I want to start tonight by congratulating one of our teachers who's here tonight, Ms. Mary Hall. Is our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month for the month of April. Ms. Hall teaches fifth grade at Crestview Elementary School, and she was nominated by her principal, Ms. Anne Adams, who is also here with her tonight, and Ms. Hall is very deserving of this recognition. So Ms. Hall, if you will come forward, please, and Ms. Anne, you can come with her. And then we have our rep from American Fidelity who's going to present her with her award Thank you very much. I thought she had to speak, but she didn't.
Ms. Mary Hall, congratulations from the whole board.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You've done a tremendous job. I know you have. I've known you since you started and you've been a fabulous asset to our community.
Thank you. And we matter, you matter, and so we thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Thank you.
We certainly want to thank American Fidelity and Grant Skelton for sponsoring that program for us. As a reminder to the board, we'll be honoring our district level Teachers of the Year next Wednesday, April 14th, at our principal's meeting. I told you about this last month, but I wanted to remind you about it again tonight. The meeting will be at Drummond's Elementary, and of course, you all are invited to attend that meeting to help us celebrate those teachers.
What time is that again, Dr. Bird?
Nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Drummond's Elementary. And Mr. Bird, we're usually in the gym so that we can be spread out, so probably in the gym.
All right.
As you've been made aware, we were approached a few weeks ago by the leadership of the Tipton County Republican Party who expressed concern with our curriculum. Chief of one of those concerns was, as you've heard tonight, was their interpretation that CRT, or Critical Race Theory, may be embedded within the reading programs we adopted. And we are working with them in accordance with Board Policy 4.400 to set a time when they can research all of our adopted materials. Dr. Combs has reached out to the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Schwinn, Representative White, Representative Kelsey, Representative Moody, who also chairs the State's Education Instruction Committee. Senator Rose has connected with Dr. Combs via phone on more than one occasion to express his commitment to follow up on these concerns and offer any assistance that he can provide us. He and Dr. Combs stay in contact, and I believe they even spoke today on the phone. We haven't received any feedback from any of the others regarding the sample texts. The same texts that we all provided for you, we sent to them as well, but we're waiting to hear back from them. As you have also had the opportunity to review the curriculum, we do not see the CRT connection so far, but that doesn't mean we aren't going to work diligently and cooperatively to continue this review process. Our goal, as is yours, is to educate our students and to prepare them for mastery of Tennessee state standards. However, we would never knowingly subject our children to harmful content. And I want to make you aware that an additional step we've taken is to contact officials from Amplify CKLA, which is our K-5 adoptable reading program, regarding the concerns that have been raised by the Tipton County Republican Party. They are, those officials are reviewing the concerns and will be sending us, as of yesterday, I said they'll be sending us some additional resources and information as well. And I want to take just a few minutes to remind everyone of our textbook adoption process, which again is outlined in the policy I referenced, 4400. We are required to establish a local textbook adoption committee to review materials from the state-approved adoption list, and that list is vetted through the state textbook commission. Publishers then send samples of their materials to each school and are also invited to present to the textbook adoption committee in the spring of the adoption year. Notice is placed on our district website, providing citizens of the community with an opportunity to examine proposed textbooks and instructional materials prior to their final adoption. After reviewing all the materials, the local textbook adoption committee makes a recommendation to the superintendent, who then sends that recommendation to you all for approval. Although use of textbooks and instructional materials that are not on the state textbook commission list is permissible, the board, if the board submits a waiver to the State Board of Education and that waiver is approved. And although you can do that, we adopted our reading materials from the state-approved list last spring. And one additional point of clarification that I want to make to you all tonight, while the student readers may not be sent home, each student and their parent or guardian have digital access to the same materials through our single sign-on portal. And then the last thing I want to share with you, some exciting news that we just got today, and I'll take questions at the end, of course, if you have any. You may have seen this on Facebook, those of you who are on Facebook, but Ms. Jennifer Botticello, who was our five through eight district level teacher of the year, was named a regional finalist today for Tennessee Teacher of the Year. So yeah, so we want to say congratulations to Ms. Botticello publicly, wish her good luck as she moves on to the next level of competition. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless somebody has questions for me.
Dr. Bird, you talked about the textbook committee. Who is on this committee?
So when we did the reading adoption, we had two teachers from each school on the committee representing all schools and all grade levels, as well as administrators, supervisors.
So you had written teachers on the committee?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way, I'm sorry, is there any way we can see the vote? Like who voted for what material?
We, the form that we have to submit to the state is just a final form of what the consensus was for the group. I don't, I don't think we have this school voted for this, this school voted for that, but we had to reach a consensus and they all sign off on that consensus. And I believe that was presented to you all last spring, but I'm happy to provide you another copy.
Yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking for that is the point that was brought up about multiple schools not wanting it and only one wanting it, I'd just like to see where the votes came through, so.
Sure. I'll provide you that information.
All right. Did we have any dissent from anyone on the committee at that time?
At that time? I don't recall any concerns about content. You have to understand that was over a year ago, but off the top of my head, Mr. Davidson, I don't recall concerns at that point about content. I don't, I can't say that every teacher in the district was 100% for CKLA, but what they have to do is, when we provide them the opportunity to look at the materials and the publishers present, they, the textbook adoption committee goes back to the school, they share that information with the teachers, and then we come back together for a discussion and a vote to reach a consensus. But I don't recall, and Ms. Shipley, she's behind me, and Mr. Macklin, I don't know if you recall at that point if there was any concern about content.
I do not recall any concern about content, no sir.
But we, anytime we're required to adopt a new textbook curriculum, we always make all that information available to parents, either at the, where the books are stored or at the individual schools and things like that. Now, I've been involved a long time, I'm a retired teacher, as you know, in the system. I have never known of a parent taking an interest in doing that. Have you?
Not in my experience, no sir. No. And it is, as you said, it was posted on the website. As a matter of fact, if you, if you go to the latest news section, because it's been over a year, it is now scrolled down, and so you don't, you no longer see it on the first page. It's about on page five of the latest news now because it's been so long ago, the announcement is actually still on there where we, where we advertised that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dr. Bird? Thank you, Dr. Bird.
You're welcome.
Dr. Shaw Fisher, Director of Operations.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Bird.
I want to share a couple of things with you, and then Mr. Hall is here as well. With open enrollment, I wanted to make you aware that all of our schools will have available slots. Monday, April 12th, the open enrollment application will be placed on the school district website. And our open enrollment applications will be accepted a little bit earlier this year. We have set the date from May 10th to May 24th, which will be here at the central office from 8 until 3. Now, this information was communicated to our parents on the third nine weeks report card, and we'll also be sending out some additional information to them, and it'll be placed on the website. So just want you to be very aware of that. But all of our schools do have available open enrollment slots. The second thing is, we are in the preparation now to begin our summer feeding. We're planning for summer feeding this summer. We will offer meals at all of our school sites, of course, because we will be providing summer school, but we will also provide our drive-through sites as we did last summer, some drive-through sites, as well as some grab and go where our bus drivers actually went to the communities and delivered. That will be in Munford, Brighton, Drummond, Mason, and Covington area for any children that will not be participating in the summer feed, in the summer school. Some exciting news, adult education. We currently have 22 Tipton County community members that have successfully completed their HSET, their GED, as we speak. We have two that actually tested today, and their results are pending, and we have nine more community members that will be testing late in April. So we are very excited about our adult education program. In the midst of COVID, we've been able to do some really good things for our community.
That's awesome.
It is. Thank you. And then one transportation fact that you may or may not be aware of. Tipton County Schools is one of 89 school districts in the state of Tennessee which provide their own transportation. You know that we are the 14th largest school district in the state, but however, you may not be aware that we are ranked number four in the state based on the number of miles that we travel daily transporting children. Our buses travel on average of 5,104 miles every day. We are ranked number four. Williamson County is three. Sumner County is two, and Davidson County is number one. So our transportation staff does a tremendous job daily, traveling from the Shelby, Fayette, Lauderdale, and Haywood County line, as well as traveling throughout Tipton County. They meet the daily needs that we have with the declining driver, bus driver pool, managing the day-to-day operations with breakdowns, the parent concerns we have, accidents, the pandemic, and just everyday bus driver issues. So our hats go off to Mr. Morris and Mr. Wigan for their leadership and our drivers and our mechanics for doing the job that they do. So we're really excited about that.
What was that ranking again, Dr. Fisher? I'm sorry.
Number four. Number four. We travel 5,000 miles a day with our buses. And that's all I have.
Mr. Ball?
Yes. Mr. Barnett, would you come? I think I'm just going to share some bid information with you. If you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
You're very welcome.
Over the last few years, we've been concentrating on upgrading our roofs, and we were so fortunate. Dr. Combs told us we could bid some out, and we had no idea it would be the amount we could. But anyway, we bid, we bid the roofs out, and we had 10 projects, which amounted to seven schools. So we did that. We put it in the paper. Ark Roofing, who has done our last three projects, bid in, they were the only one strict one they used to bid, kind of dropped out on several years ago, but the Ark Roofing bid was $3,972,532.
Can you say that one more time? That's for seven schools?
Yes. And the man, and we've been discussing trying to prioritize the ones we've done, the two middle schools we did already, that was the ones that needed it the most, and that's more that need so much. But so, anyway, we would like to ask if you all would approve this $3,972,532 school improvement for the roofs.
Are these complete roofs?
Yes.
Yes. Some of our, well, they're, some of them are complete sections. It depends.
Okay.
They're not repairs or patches.
Yeah. Okay. Brighton High School has some flat, all, everything we're doing are flat roofs. None of, we've had no problems with any end roofs. But Mr. Shipley's office down there must have been letting all steam, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of holes up in that roof.
My daughter wouldn't invite me to Sunday dinner if I didn't ask if Munford Elementary was included.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then, we did some work at Munford, it was Munford Middle.
Munford Middle and Crestview Middle both had a complete replacement a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
And this is all through the Esser funds.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Motion by Mr. Shipley, seconded by Mr. Benson. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
All that steam down there, I better make it out.
That's right. Financial report, Ms. Paige Murdaugh.
Hi, this is Ms. Bird. Amendment. I'm sorry, I can't say anything. We'll just start with 141, and we have a couple of things. I think you had correspondence with Dr. Combs about Esser 2.0. And so we took that amendment, it's a federal amendment, and it involves some dollars from General to get them started with their ability to spend money. And so the county commission had, the county finance commission has already seen this Esser 2.0, and I'll show you a little bit, but the one part that you have to see from 141 is in this part. So if you'll look on page two. Now, let's look on page three, because I want to take the second from the last column first. And that's where you can see the transfers in of $4 million. Dr. Combs, W.T., and the mayor all decided that $4 million would be what the federal fund would have to have to start their process of purchasing, starting when this budget is approved at the county. And they won't be able to get their money fast enough to start working. So there's no buffer in their, you know how the federal budget is dollar for dollar, cent for cent? You spend $5.52, you request that back. So they don't have any leeway. So this is to give them some leeway, and of course, it's a lot of money because we're talking about paying for roofs. So they're going to transfer $4 million to federal funds, and then when they are finished, they will transfer that $4 million back to us. So we will not, there won't be any loss of money from General to Federal. So you see that $4 million on the transfers in, and if you look on the very last page, you'll see the transfer out that starts that process, the $4 million transferred out from 141 and into 142. So you'll see where all those dots are connected. So that's the only part of Esser 2 that's in 141. So if we don't have any questions about that, we'll move to the, next to the last column, which is all of our amendments for the year. It's kind of lengthy, so bear with me. So on page two of 141, you can see that we are receiving $297,800 for summer stools, summer bridge camps, and string camps throughout the next two years. And this is the amount we've put in the budget to take care of this particular summer, $297,800. Are we all on page two? All right? Then at the bottom, remember at the beginning of the year, we had money from the federal government who sent dollars to take care of unemployment taxes that we had due to COVID. And this $27,500 is what we received from the federal government to take care of those unemployment charges. On page three, you can see at the top, the total revenue income was $325,300. And then on the expenditures on page three. Know how detailed you guys want me to get, group by group or every single line? Group by group. So I understand. So in the regular instruction, 7100, we moved money to take care of, taking all the money that was left over in different line items and putting it where those dollars were needed to do some last end-of-the-year type things, purchases and the like. So we had a negative effect on regular instruction, $53,280. And then in the alternative school, we removed $4,000 from the alternative school budget, but we also were able to spend about $8,000 on some equipment, so they had some benefit from that as well. If you look at the 71200 Special Education budget, those dollars were moved out of the teacher line because we had lost three different slots this year due to enrollment. And so all of those other negative numbers are an effect of people leaving, and all of their benefits had to be reduced as well. In the vocational education, we needed to move some dollars into medical. we needed to move some dollars into medical insurance. Seems we never have enough money in our insurance lines. And so $5,000 was taken out, and the rest was just moved in that budget area. So in page five, the adult education, we added $5,700 to what we already had to take care of one of the positions that wasn't funded at the beginning of the year. And that's where that additional dollars fell. And then the 71901, the COVID expenditures, that was for the people who are in instruction. The amount that we paid out for, this is 50% of what the government asked us to pay back, the $18,800. That was just the instructional piece. That's what we paid back from what they gave us. It was very convoluted. They gave us money, we paid it out. So it was a moot point to me. Then in the support services, we added $10,000 to other contracted services for our nurses contract. And on page six, we had a guidance counselor to leave halfway through the year. So we reduced our salaries for guidance counselors by his leftover dollars. And of course, that carried with it the benefits as well. So we removed $30,700 from the guidance personnel section. In the 72210, the regular instruction supervisors area, we were able to reduce that line by $38,000 and added $10,000 to their retirement line. That's all that they needed to be added. On page seven, we were able to take $5,000 out of the medical insurance and $5,000 from in-service staff. Most of our in-service and travel didn't take, didn't get taken care of this year due to the pandemic. So we had some leftover dollars there. And in technology, we moved $20,000 into internet connectivity and $8,000 into cabling. So they didn't have an effect of adding or subtracting any dollars. In 72310, we were able to take $40,000 out of our legal services and $10,000 out of travel because you guys don't wear this year. So Office of the Principal, 72410, we moved $8,000 out of the principal line and put that $8,000 into their medical insurance for that category. And then on page nine, we moved $13,000 out from a position that we lost last year, that the total wasn't taken out from the budget, and $5,000 out of the medical insurance because that person who left had insurance. Then in plant operations, I do have one change in there. The other contracted services, we are adding $543,780. And then we've taken out $260,000 from electricity, $20,000 from natural gas, and $40,000 from water and sewer. And then we added $14,500. Those two numbers are different. So we added $238,000 to their area to shore up some of the things that are taken care of. You remember last month, you all approved the $300,000 for the LED lighting? So we shifted the money around so that there would be enough money to pay for that. In maintenance of plant, you can see we added $1,320,000 for medical insurance and $20,000 for other contracted services. And then at the top of page 10, you can see that we also added $267,000 for maintenance equipment, which is long overdue, some vehicles that we're going to be able to purchase. And then in people transportation, 72710, we moved some dollars around in there to take care of some buses. He's going to be able to purchase three buses that were not planned to purchase this year. So that was very, very good. And then in our COVID expenditures for the support staff, we had to pay out $8,000 for that. The food services needed $2,000 in their social security. And we took away $10,000 from their transportation. They have not been able to get the supplies that they have been wanting to get. Community service, we moved, took $5,000 out of social security and into retirement. And then the early childhood education, we just moved some dollars around to make sure that they're budgeted, which is all-inclusive. They don't, they don't ever give up money or add anything to them. And then the 7300 for unemployment was $850 that needed to be added. We did some shifting in the 76100, the Capitol Athletic line. And the overall balance is we added $325,300. Everything else was already there, just shifted so that we could purchase the things at the end of the year that we needed. Any questions about 141? All right.
You have to be under there. You think the main budget, right?
I'm through with 141 submitted. Now it'll give you 142.
Oh, right.
All right, so 142 is lengthy, but it's divided. If you can, look at the top where it's the April Esser 2.0. The net effect includes the $3,900,000 that Mr. Hall just talked to you about. And the rest is taken care of for in-school things. And this, these dollars will stay with us for two years?
2024.
Is it June of 24? So we'll have it for quite some time. But this is all put in the budget all at once. So you can see the $7,944,180 that is being deposited, and along with that $4 million that General is going to give to Federal. And then the rest of those dollars in that third from the last, those are all the things that we're going to purchase with the Esser 2.0 dollars. So that is going to become active next Monday night when the county commission approves that, just that single line. Okay? Any questions about the Esser money? All right, so now if you'll look on page one, they had some dollars from in that May 21, because it won't go to the county until May. So the 765291 that was added for the unemployment COVID grant for Federal was added there. And then on page two, you can see in 71200, the IDEA group, they moved some of their dollars around. Nothing was added or taken away, but they shifted where their dollars ended so that they could take care of the needs for the students with disabilities during the rest of this school year. And then the amount that we had for the unemployment for the constructional people was $596927. So that was added. On page three, the support services for 72220, that is also with IDEA, and that's their supervisor line. So they have some changes that were made in there. On page four, you can see they had to add some medical insurance, and then they moved some dollars out of the contracts with private agencies because the lady was doing vision care. Is no longer able to do that. And then the last grouping on this page for the Office of the Principals, they had to add a few dollars for the half of the principal's salary that is over at KES. And then on page five, the support services, they had to add some dollars in there to take care of some bus routes between now and the end of the school year. And then the 168364 for the COVID expenditures for unemployment for the beginning of the school year. And then on page six, there's the total estimated expenditures, 748889. And then an additional $164.02 that goes to indirect costs due to the monies that they moved around. So a total effect on the budget was an additional 765291. Any questions on 142? All right, 143. The only change that they had to make was to add the unemployment COVID dollars to their line. It's $15,300. You see that in 47801 that was added in the May amendment? And then it was taken away for the remittance back to UTRUS, $15,300 on that second page. Was the only amendment that food service had. Any questions on 143? All right, so 177. I think we already mentioned to you all that we were going to close this fund at the end of this year. So when we do our final check that comes out of 177, if 819,765 is not the number that we spent at the bank and trustee's office, there may be $146.64, I think, that is a difference. But we will close it out to equal zero. So I may have to change that number in May, but I won't know until they finally finish paying that out. We're still waiting for a couple of things to be completed in May. So any questions about amendments?
Do we have a motion to approve the amendments as presented? Motion by Mr. Furrow, seconded by Mr. Davidson. Are there any questions? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paige. Will that be it for the school year, please?
Sir.
Will that be it as far as amendments are concerned, this particular school year, in January?
The county commission hopes so, I think.
Dr. Combs, would you like to add anything?
Yes, sir. I just have one thing I want to bring to y'all's attention. I'm interested in pursuing the installation of artificial turf on all three of our high school football fields. So the reason that's coming up now, with the addition of the Esser funds that we've been getting, we were able, as you'll see tonight, to pay for roof replacements, HVAC upgrades, the tech that we've had come in that we ordered back in July, but we got about three weeks ago. But anyway, that's a different story. I think now's a good time to be able to use some of that fund balance to do this. And I think we'll have good support to do that. A number of things, we want to help advertise our programs. Nothing will do that like, you know, something that stands out and looks impressive, especially for a rural school system. The field will be more durable for multiple activities. Ban all of the kind of sports, everybody can use it. There's a 10-year warning on most of these fields that will make it a lot more durable. And of course, our favorite, graduation, will be able to continue if it rains 30 minutes before or not because the field will drain a whole lot better than a grass field will. You know, of course, there's all this stuff about getting rid of, you know, maintenance and cutting and fertilizing and all that kind of good stuff, too. But I'm asking for your support to research that possibility. I'm not asking for a number or anything tonight. I mean, I've been doing some research, and I kind of have an idea in my head. We're probably talking about around $5 million to do all three fields. But I'd like, you know, to have y'all's blessing to go ahead and research that a little further. We wouldn't be talking about for this next football season. It would be for the season following that. Because what we don't want to do is get something like this going and then have a weather problem interrupt everything, and you can't start the season. So, you know, we would, you know, I've talked to a couple of coaches about it, too, and I think that would be a good thing, be able to.
22 city.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, Dr. Combs, you touched about who would be using the field? Girls, boys, soccer?
Girls, boys, junior football, middle school.
Cheerleading, middle school.
Yes, sir.
Football.
Ban competitions. You know, right now, a lot of times when I think they're a little worried of letting everybody on the field is because when it's money or they're going to tear it up for a big game or whatever, you know. But this way, it does give, you know, I've talked to the superintendent in Dyersburg and looked at their field, Carterville, some of those other ones. And it's, it's, it's a good investment, I think, especially if we have the money to do it. And I think our fund balance shows that we do have the money to do that, so.
Was this recommended by the new projects manager? Or is this a suggestion from the old part-time projects manager?
This is from the part-time person. We just put that new position, advertised it yesterday, I guess. So it's going to run for two weeks. We don't have that one yet. This is, this is my idea. Yes, sir.
Is there any objection? If it's not, Dr. Combs, I guess you're free to research this and get back with us later if it was enough.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Dr. Combs, if you want to make the donation yourself.
I appreciate that. Put my initials on the form.
Dr. Combs, do you have anything?
No, sir. That's all I have. Thank you.
I want to remind everybody about the retreat in the morning at 8:30. Starts at 8:30 at the EMA building. So if there's no any, no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that one.
Motion by Mr. Clark? Seconded by Mr.